All right, everyone. I am going to call the meetings in order. I am conducting in Paula's absence. Paula messaged about an hour and a half ago and been trying to muscle through it. It's not doing as sick, and so she turned over. So we are being recorded. And I think with that, we need to open with a roll call. Am I prepared for that? All right. So Jason.
I'm present.
Mark.
Present.
Michael.
Present.
Jean.
Present.
Jen, not yet. Gordon Laws, I'm here. I think that's it. So do we have any public participation?
I did. But I'll say it again.
The meeting is being recorded.
Better safe than sorry.
Yes.
Unfortunately.
Any public participation? Seeing none. And we will proceed to the approval of minutes for October 19th.
Motion to approve the minutes from our October 19th 20th term meetings.
All right. Paula's there. Aye.
Karen, aye.
Karen, did you get that?
Present, present.
School Resource Officer MOU, which I think is language that we get between us and the School Resource Officer. Do we have anybody here to talk about or explain that?
Yep. So in your packet, you'll find a proposed MOU from our Chief of Police, Chief Spleen. And this is the same MOU that was signed last year by the committee. It is the Department of Education language, for the most part, with specifics related to our district inserted into that template. So it has been reviewed by council. It is recommended that we sign this agreement. And the vote I'm asking for tonight is that you grant the Chair of the Committee the authority to sign off on the memorandum of understanding with the police.
I make a motion to authorize the Chair of Silver Lake Regional School Committee to sign the memorandum of understanding to our School Resource Officer.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. All right. Let's go to the principals' reports. Ms. Quett.
Hi, everyone. I don't have anything official official, but I just wanted to thank the community and the staff here at SLRMS, not only for their kindness, their support, their generosity. Yesterday, we had an ambulance had to come through because a kid got queasy in health class. But the students were excellent. Everybody did everything while I was talking about instruction in the classroom. So that was amazing. The kids were just so great. Like, how so? You know what I mean? They were just asking. So we debriefed with them. That was excellent. We also have a bunch of families who are donating, not only to our Toys for Tots drive, but for our food drive during Thanksgiving. And it's been really a supportive movement from all, and I just am so grateful to be here. So, thank you.
Any questions from Ms. Quett? All right. Principal Gill.
Good evening. I'd like to introduce two of our student representatives, who are going to give you our school updates this evening. We have Connor Doyle and Natalie Swann. Out of the way. You've been mic'd by the team.
Oh, I'm gonna get in line. Oh, you got it. Yeah. This is important.
Good evening, everyone. Our names are Maddie Joyce and Connor Doyle, and we're happy to be here to share with you our innovative college plans and events for our high school students. As a vote representative to student council, we would like to lead off with some updates there. We begin our year with an infow sheet to discuss our mission statement and begin closer as a council. We moved our homecoming week back to the month of October during the week of Monday, October 10th, through the following Monday, October 16th. This choice ended up being a good one, as our students enjoyed a homecoming week, while they'd fun Spirit Week dress up days, such as Barbie vs. Karen, Country vs. Country Club, and of course, celebrate Spirit Day. We would like to congratulate this near-class for the Spirit Week competition and having a Kona extra visit in the spring, as well as commend the junior class for winning the annual tailgate competition. Our council built off the success of homecoming, by attending both regional and state conferences throughout the month of October to build our leadership skills. And right before Thanksgiving, we celebrated our annual Laker Day, while the exciting games of Dinko, two images shows, and a large school pep rally. For the month of December, the Laker Day 2.0 capped off with the faculty team versus our unified basketball team, with a special commemoration of our school being recognized as a national banner school by the Special Olympics. This event will be in coordination with the food drive by our local food pantry, and the council looks forward to continuing to grow their leadership skills at the next regional conference in February. For our students involved with the arts, who may be a bit biased, but the drama club put on a truly spectacular production of Annie, with three shows over four days just this past weekend. Both cast and crew were to go out and sleep to make this production outstanding, and to show truly the value to the fans and to the program. This production was very special, as it combined both our middle and high school drama programs, reuniting both old friends and creating new friendships.
And as we begin the winter athletic season, we would also like to take a moment to update you, athletes of our fall sports teams. We would like to give a special shout-out to both our girls' varsity volleyball team for making it to this year's state tournament, and our unified basketball team for being featured on Channel 5 for their role in making Silver Lake a national unified school. Beyond any statistical success on the field or court, our athletes made us proud this fall by showing an indelible work ethic and immovable resolve. Our teams made us proud by fighting until the very end, no matter the score or the circumstance. We wanted to end our update tonight by reflecting on what has so far been a year of change. Students return this fall with many new expectations and goals. Whether it was parking, or phone use, or even just adjusting back to the workload of school, students have persevered through every obstacle and rose to the occasion. We owe a great deal of thanks to our administrators, especially Principal Gill, as well as our assistant principals Pratt and Blood, for their cooperation and commitment to working with students to make Silver Lake a place where everyone feels welcome. And with that, our student update draws to a close. We would like to thank you all for listening, and we would be happy to answer any questions, comments, or concerns you may have. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions, anybody?
No question, but I did want to congratulate both the unified basketball team. That was an excellent spot on WCBB. And the Annie production, which I attended all three nights, and it was phenomenal and very well done. So congratulations.
Thank you. Yes, thank you for supporting both our athletes and our art students.
Principal Gill, you have any other?
I have one other item of business, which is a request for an out-of-state field trip. Our junior class, the class of 2025, would like to organize a trip to Kennedy Lake Park, which is in New Hampshire. So we need the school committee's permission to travel, of course, all considerations, so that any student who wants to participate will be able to, regardless of financial ability, to pay and cover anybody that wants to go.
Okay. I make a motion to allow the junior class to travel out of state to Kennedy Lake Park for a field trip.
Sure.
Any further discussion?
Just, if I may, I know that the middle school has a trip also planned for Kennedy Lake. How is that? You mentioned financial ability. Is that something that you've had positive success with, the way that you put out the flyer?
Yes. To the year. To the point where I don't think we're gonna have to fundraise.
Excellent.
It's amazing.
My last question.
I was gonna say.
Yeah, I'll share with you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
For the principal's report, I'd just like to put on my Bethlehem and thank the Silver Lake students that came to the Kingston Veterans Event and helped serve the food and put on a wonderful event. And all the veterans were very appreciative. The students were phenomenal. Complete with a rounding applause gauntlet leaving the event, where they all applauded the veterans on their way out. So I think, I haven't seen that kind of support for veterans from students in a long time, and it was sincerely appreciated by everybody that was there.
Well, we're glad. I know the middle school hosted an event for veterans as well. That was widely attended.
Yeah, and the kids were proud. So thank you.
Thank you very much for doing it, helping with that.
Absolutely.
Any other discussion of the motion on the floor? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Dave.
This conversation is a follow-up to some conversations we had last year about per diem substitute rates to both adjust the daily teacher substitute rate and to codify the rates for some of our support staff. So I'd rate you four proposals. I'll share them, summarize it briefly, and then explain the rationale behind each of them. The first one would be, this is in your packet, to increase the daily substitute teacher rate from $107 to $110 a day, to establish a rate for daily substitute paraprofessionals at $104. The third proposal would be to make both of those effective January 1, 2024. The fourth one is really a continuation of what the committee agreed to last year, which is to, for our support staff, continue to pay cafeteria workers at the Step 1 rate, which is currently $16.69, and substitute custodians and clerical employees at the part-time Step 1 rate, which is $23.38 and $22.63 respectively. So as far as why bring those proposals, the first one regarding the substitute teacher rate, we did a comparison of about 10 different towns that we've been using in negotiations with our different unions. And it's not easy to do a total apples-to-apples comparison, because some people have different rates for certified, non-certified staff, if you've worked there before or whatnot. But if you took all those rates together, the median rate is $110. So I think that puts us, you know, right where we want to be, in the middle of the road, as far as regional compensation for subs. And also, one thing I think we want to be mindful of is we don't want to push that rate up so high that we actually are going to exceed the rate of a Step 1 paraprofessional. As far as the second proposal, $104 for a paraprofessional, I did not learn until this fall that actually, substitute as a paraprofessional, they have been paid the Step 1 rate. So that means that if you substitute as a paraprofessional right now, you get paid more than a substitute teacher. And so that number seemed like something that, you know, we obviously want a competitive rate, but to me, it stood to reason that it might be problematic to have a rate for a paraprofessional that exceeds a teacher. The reason why I propose making these changes effective January 1st is that everybody could, all the districts in the region, could do that at the same time. I brought this proposal to all three of the other committees. Halifax and Plinton approved this. Kingston approved, the first want to increase the substitute rate, but did not agree to establish the rate at $104 and said, kept that the same. So both if you sub as a paraprofessional in Kingston, or as a teacher, you get paid the same $110 per day rate. And then again, the fourth one around the support staff, I brought that here just because I felt like, I think sometimes we're relying on institutional memory for the subrates, and I just wanted there to be clarity about the committee, you know, establishing those rates, so that we can codify that. I'm happy to take any questions.
So you did an analysis of the typical schools that we use for our comparative salaries. There are some teaching substitute rates that are of size, $120 a day. There are some very close to here, not mentioning any towns, that's at $90. But those, the quality of being able to fill substitute teaching positions on a daily basis, I don't know if it's all money-based. A lot of it's the environment that you're going into, I'm sure. And everybody would want to come to Silver Lake and be a substitute teacher, I'm sure. But I'd like to hear from the principals and see how they're able to fill the spots based on the price that we're currently at, $107, that we're getting more. And whether or not they think $120 would be better, to be competitive. I know deployment sub is $120, as one example.
I would say, historically, I would say we lose some people to other districts if they have the choice between two jobs. Obviously, they're gonna go with the one that pays more. First off, it's more convenient to come to us, because they live nearby. The more money we pay them, the more, there's a correlation there. The more we pay, the more likely we are to get substitutes. This time of year, obviously, is especially hard with, you know, a lot of sickness going around, so we do, our daily attendance rate for staff is higher than usual this time of year, which is to be expected. So it is difficult to fill those positions. And I would say, there has never been a day where every single teacher who's been out has been covered by subs. We're usually pulling teachers to do coverage, or we're helping out with coverage, because we just don't have enough, a deep enough sub.
And that seems to be industry-wide, though. I mean, across the board. They haven't been able to fill all the positions that are vacant.
A lot of people are running into education.
Yeah, I spend a lot of my Sundays trying to find subs for the week, and I try and think outside the box sometimes, because, you know, the system is one thing, but the personalized text is another thing, right? Hey, what are you doing on Wednesday? Do you want to come help us out? I'm not sure, you know, we talked about money, and we're gonna talk about budget soon, that we want to make sure we don't take money from something else. So we need to know all of the pieces of that.
And then the last part is, do you feel that offering a little bit more for somebody that's teacher-qualified with credentials is worth it? Do you prefer that type of person coming in your institution, or do you, regular substitute teachers? Does that make a difference?
I would say my preference, of course, is that you have someone who has teaching experience or is licensed to teach. I don't know that we have a large handful that has that type of credential, though, if you're in our, we're under staff, or our regular staff, as it is. You know, it's very difficult to fill these positions.
To bring in a retired teacher with an increased rate, you don't see that that would be a value-added for that, have a different step for that.
It can be, but they can't make as much money either in their first few years of retirement. You know, they have a cap. So that's another piece.
They'll probably come just because they want to do it, right?
A year and a half ago or so, though, we did, we changed our rates for long-term subs, which is incredibly helpful. At the time, we were asking, you know, the retired or certified teachers to come in, and they were giving a daily subrate for a few weeks, and then they would jump up to Step 1 salary. So that has been helpful in filling the long-term positions. So we do appreciate the committee's support with that.
Thanks.
I would make a motion to accept all four of Dave's proposals as presented. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Aye. All right. Let's see. Christine.
Thank you. In your electronic package tonight, you do have a copy of the financial, and we're starting to see a few little slight cracks in our financial picture at the moment. There are a handful of deficits. I think there are five or six that total just under $10,000, and those will easily be absorbed within their budget categories, with just some swings within categories. Couple of things that I want to bring to your attention. If you look at page four of the detail at the top of the page, there's a deficit under athletic contract and services, and that's primarily due to, I don't know if you recall, we've switched the athletic training position from our teacher's salary line to the specific line, because it is a contracted service. It's an outside person. But we've found that in addition to the schedule they normally maintain, there are some new requirements through MIA, is it? Our returns is MIA, I just sent them today, so I was trying to remember which one it was. So M-I-I-A, right? So there are some additional requirements that require an athletic trainer to be there where it was not always required. So we're having a short file this year, and that account will budget appropriately for that for next year. That's $5,031.
Is that the total income amounts for the year?
We have encumbered for the balance of the year.
About $5,000?
Correct. So that deficit of $5,000 includes the encumbers for the rest of the year.
Appreciate it.
So we're trying to check account for that. And then as we progress through the financial, if you get to the very last page, under psychological contract and services, there's a deficit of both the middle school and the high school for a couple of different reasons. The middle school is primarily due to additional services that have been needed, whether it's an evaluation or occupational therapy, physical therapy services. So they're coming a little higher this year than they had last year. And then at the high school, we have still short a school psychologist. We have a .5 person who's filling that position, but they're not doing evaluations. So they're being housed under the guidance line, which is where that position is budgeted, but we're paying an outside contractor to do the evaluations, and that's what's coming out of this line. But in the end, we should have a surplus in that guidance line, because we're only finding a .5 position there. So in the end, between that and these additional services, we will have, we will cover the deficits. And the last item I want to mention is the special education transportation at both the middle school and the high school. We have struggled the past few years to stay ahead of the increases, and we're still not catching up with the changes in special education transportation happen quicker than the budget we keep up with them. And then unfortunately, we're still with a position, we have fewer vendors to call on, and when there are fewer vendors, there are fewer choices for the district. So we are getting everybody transported, and it's getting what they need to be, but it's becoming, it's a financial struggle at some times. But again, in this account, we have encumbered through the end of the year, so this is what we expect to be by the end of June. That's where we are at this moment in time. Are there any questions? Thank you.
I have one comment to make. The issues that we're finding with transportation, but specifically with special ed transportation is being seen statewide. And there is one collaborator in the state that runs transportation for its member districts, and that has become a model throughout the Commonwealth, and it's something that the state legislature is looking at, taking over transportation for public schools and make it a quasi-public entity under our collaboratives in the area. There seems to be a cabal of sorts with transportation vendors in Massachusetts, and when you put bids out, get single, respond to that from the same vendor year in and year out, it just seems too coincidental. And like Christine was saying, the increases don't even reflect the increases we know are from inflationary pressures. So, yeah. Totally understood. Thank you for your report. I make a motion to accept Christine's report as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? If you can have this. All right. Aye.
And then just one more thing. I would like to introduce Sarah Hippie. Sarah is our new Director of Finance. Sarah started with us on November 27th, so we've had some time together. And we previously, we do know each other from our world, our business manager world. So we're gonna have about a month together to share information as we can. Sarah comes with a little different background than I had when I did this. Sarah was a teacher for quite some time, then she was a department head, and then a curriculum director for mathematics, assistant curriculum coordinator for mathematics. And then five years ago, no, how many years ago? Five years ago, she went to Middleborough as a school business official. So this is her next stop on the path, that journey. Thank you for joining us. Thank you for having me.
So if you're not getting, missing the context, Christine is retiring, I believe this is her last meeting with us?
I believe it is, yes.
So obviously, Christine has performed immense service to the district, and we wish you nothing but happiness and well-being in retirement and...
Long retirement.
Long retirement.
Yeah. Thank you.
And we will miss you a lot.
Thank you very much.
And Sarah, welcome.
Thank you.
Very excited to meet you. All right. Keep using my place on the page. So Brian, I think we're up to you.
Thank you. I said the last time we met was just before our November 7th Professional Development Day, so I just wanted to provide a brief overview of what everybody worked on on November 7th. So the focus of that day, we started the presentations to make progress toward our goal of enhancing our multi-tiered systems of support. So we have a District MTSS Steering Committee. Slides were developed in collaboration with teachers and Dr. Pinerisi to provide an overview of the ways in which we try to support all learners. Essentially, MTSS is trying to provide all students with what they need, whether it's additional support, collecting data as part of the special education testing process, or extending learning for students. So to kick off the day at the middle school and the high school, there were interactive presentations about the MTSS process, how support teams feed into that, and the work of the District MTSS Steering Committee. In the afternoon, departments broke out with their coordinators to work on developing common assessments and following a data analysis protocol. So sometimes on PD days, we have district-wide convenings, developing MTSS teams, support team is more building-based, so we collected some feedback on the day, and we received lots of threes and fours on our survey, which the goal was to make progress towards developing our MTSS process. We feel like we accomplished that on November 7th. So I just wanted to provide that brief overview of how we spent the day.
Any questions for Brian?
Can I ask a question that's not directly related to your chicken stuff section, but it's regarding the surveys that unfortunately, we had many of them going out in October, November. But did you receive a lot of opt-outs with those, or are you seeing that parents aren't communicating, reading, emailing, and if they'd like the opt-out, they do? I just know that this is under your jurisdiction, so I guess...
Yeah, that's a good question. Those, I don't mean to put Michaela and Becky on the spot, but we, for opt-outs, because it happens at the building level, we direct the parents to our principals. Anecdotally, I, the information I received was, we didn't receive a tremendous amount, but do you have more information on if that's challenging to manage at the building level?
It's me. Kind of a stupid place.
Thank you. And thank you for the communication. It's rather, I think, transferring is the best way to keep everyone happy.
I think we have a good process, and we're learning as we go, and we just, we make every effort to provide the surveys in advance, and if we, if there's any slip-ups with that, we just let people know right away what was presented, and keep moving forward and getting better.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch? All right. Let's get it out to crew.
So the first item on the update tonight is the new district website, and I wanted to begin by thanking a number of people who helped with the design and launch of the new website. That was created to provide more consistency across our schools, to update information, but also to provide greater accessibility to our parents and students. And some of the content is still being built, but for the most part, the website is up, running, and functioning well. We like to thank the parents and our staff members who have provided us with feedback in the early days of the launch, to help iron out any problems that we were experiencing with the site. And I'd like to thank Dave Murphy, Steve Pello. They were our technology representatives on our launch team. Karen Trungali, Ronald Lynch, Dave Turkot, representing central office, and Michaela Gill, Carrie Mathias, representing our secondary schools, and Carrie Whipple, representing our elementary schools. And so that team, although all of our staff and all of our schools played a role, they helped lead this project forward, so I wanted to thank them publicly. The second thing I wanted to draw your attention to is, in your packet, you have two new October 1 reports with corresponding impacts on assessments and shared cost percentages. So the first one does not include pre-K and pathways, as we have always reported our numbers in the past. But also included in your report are what these numbers would look like should all three towns vote the approved changes, and you see the numbers included for the enrollment, which includes our pre-K and pathway numbers there. And then also the different impacts on the enrollment charts that you have seen in the past. So I just wanted to draw your attention that those have been updated and included in your packet, and you can see the potential impacts, depending upon what the vote is, on how that will influence the assessments and shared costs. The next item in your packet is a draft calendar vote. In the past, the committees each have to vote to approve the calendar. I'm going to point out the significant or notable changes. So August 21st would be new teacher orientation. It's on a Wednesday, as it has always been, preceding our 26th and 27th for in-service for teachers. And then August 28th would be the first day of school next year. Next year in September, we would be looking at another Professional Development Day on the 3rd to accommodate local elections. And some years, when we don't have those elections, we are able to put our Professional Development Day after February vacation, but we're not able to do that. We need to be able to assist the towns and provide them with spaces to vote at that time. So that's the reason for that change. I also want to draw your attention to December of 2024. A notable difference here is, we discussed this with the principals and as a district leadership team, and it didn't seem to make a lot of sense to call people in for Monday the 23rd. So that's the holiday that they're proposing, is the December 23rd through January 1st next year. Should there be no snow days? Should there be no snow days? Next year, the last day would be June 13th. However, as per our policy, we have worked in five additional snow days in the event that we have weather-related cancellations, for example. And that would bring us to June 23rd of 2025. Those are the notable changes to the calendar. And I am seeking your vote and approval if you are ready this evening.
May I ask, I guess, a few basic questions regarding the 23rd? We currently do not have the actual language saying that we give December 23rd off, right? This is just based on conversations with the administrators. And looking at the calendar, I would fully support that. I think that that's going to go over very well for families that can take the two weeks. It'll be a tough pill to swallow for the families that, you know, do have to manage the childcare for that additional day, but I think that that's...
And we usually have a half-day, like this year.
Right, right. Not very cost-effective, so I would support it. Two weeks is game.
Can I ask a question? This has always been on my mind since my kids have gone to school here. Is there any reason that we always start in August before Labor Day?
I think part of the concern, and again, that decision, this has been in place before I arrived at Silver Lake. But the reality is, is that going later, we have to have at least a higher level of school days. And the later we start the school year, the later we're in our buildings. Oh, sorry. Four days.
Well, I understand that part.
APs are dictated nationally. And a lot of schools in the South start the second week of August. We start very late nationally. But we still have to take the APs at the same time.
Okay.
That's one academic reason. Another reason is the snowpocalypse of 2015. If you recall, we were actually discussing whether or not we were going to cancel virtual vacation or have kids come to school on Saturdays. And if you don't get 80% of your students show, it doesn't count. You have to do that day again. So starting a little earlier, giving yourself the away for the weather and for our high school AP courses to have that time to prepare. I wouldn't agree with that.
Just so you know, too, it isn't the contract that starts that week. So it could be renegotiated, but it isn't there.
No, I'm just seeing it as three days in August, then there's four days off, and then three days, so.
I like to ease them.
The best part of that is that it's a three-trailer decision.
When I was in elementary school, it was, it started right after Labor Day. It hit like a wall. And we didn't have, and in-service was not around for us.
Two days. During the snowpocalypse of 2015, there were many school districts. I know Waymouth was one of them. That was extended all the way to the last day in June and would have not met there minimum day because of the long snow days off. And by time-wise, we're probably due for some snow days this year.
I was teaching, while I was speaking, Jared, I was teaching Waymouth at that time. We also went to school on three Saturdays.
And still almost until the last day.
And I was planning my Fourth of July barbecue during final exam for my students.
I believe us.
And God rest his soul, Commissioner Chester at the time was not going to give any waivers to a single school district. He was out of it.
And if we have too many days, it also fucks graduation. We can only graduate so early.
Something to consider is our seniors do not have to make up the missed days, but everybody else does, so.
Which they were a little upset about last year because of the snow days.
But we're all nice. I will make a motion that we approve the 2024-2025 calendar as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor, please manifest.
Aye.
All right. Number seven, I don't have a lot of context on this. Do you, Dr. Prue, have any Silver Lake Regional Postings to website discussion?
Yes, that was presented by Karen to our chair and our legal counsel. And my understanding is that instead of posting the Silver Lake agenda to each of the towns, Silver Lake as a regional district could in fact post their own agenda...
To our website.
To our website. But in order to do that, I believe we would need the school committee's approval.
And if, may I ask a question on that? If I'm not mistaken, it should still be posted to the town, or this just supersedes the $40 department?
No, in your packet, you'll see a vote that if it's voted tonight, Paula will sign as well as Jill. I will send it to all the different towns and it's linked. The link will be on their website, so they can just go. And I will use the posting as our agenda, which will cut down on having a separate agenda, separate posting, errors in changing. It will also allow me better leeway to do the last-minute changes. Sometimes I post it to the towns, three towns, and then someone will say, oh, can you amend this and update this? And then it has to get posted again to all three towns. I am on the mask was served and they all, when they heard I was still doing it the old way, they all recommended this is much easier. We still have to abide by the 48 hours and vacations and holidays, but we won't have to post to all three towns. It'll be great.
This is where we got to fit that regional schools under state law and consider their municipality onto themselves. I make a motion to make the change to allow Silver Lake Regional Schools to post meeting and notices to their own website.
Second.
Thank you, Ben.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Karen, for doing that. It's a lot of work.
Seeing none. All in favor, please manifest. All right. So the new Silver Lake Regional Agreement to accommodate the movement of the pre-K has been voted on and approved by two of the towns. It goes next week to Town Halifax. We have met with the town, the town Board of Selectmen, who are all in favor and are recommending the passage of the measure. So we're optimistic that we'll get a positive outcome. We do have to turn in by December 31st, the amended regional agreement. And so what we need to ideally leave here tonight with is we need to move to allow the committee chair, Paula, to execute the amended regional agreement after the passage by the Town of Halifax and before our next meeting.
So moved.
Okay, so we have specific language that we have to read out. I guess I can read it and...
We'll move.
Motion to allow the committee chair, Paula Hatch, to execute the amended regional agreement after it has been passed. At the upcoming Halifax Town Meeting, the agreement must be executed and submitted to DESI before the deadline of December 31st, 2023.
So technically, you motioned it, so I'll second.
What's that?
Can you share that language with me?
Any further discussion?
Just a question. Should "after" say "if"? Just around, isn't it? We're obviously very hopeful it will pass, but is it something just to say "after"?
I don't think it matters because if it doesn't pass, our vote just...
Right. Okay, I agree. For the draw.
All right. All those in favor, please manifest.
Aye.
Aye.
All right. I was ordering this to Karen. All right. And then the second point, Subcommittee Description Matrix, which again, hi, Don.
Mr. Chair? Paula and I continue to work on the matrix we developed a few years ago with descriptions of subcommittees and time commitments, so newer members can make a more educated decision on what committees to put themselves up for when we reorganize or change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Let's go to your reports of discussion committees and let's go to the Silver Lake SLA.
Good evening, everyone. Just so quiet, I don't have anything to talk about. You know, it's the first night of Hanukkah, so I just wish everybody a happy holiday season and hope that our staff and students have a nice break. Thank you very much.
There you go. Thank you. Administrative review. Navi? Okay. Career CTE? Navi? Chairman's report. I am not aware of any correspondence and Paula didn't leave me with any, so. The Legislative Agent's report.
So literally this week, we passed a supplemental $3.1 billion budget. $75 million was for extraordinary relief for special ed costs, but good luck figuring out exactly how we qualify for it. Waiting for DESI's Cliff Notes on that to come out. There was also $75 million put for school districts who are hosting migrant children to help offset that cost as well. And unfortunately, $8.8 million for the printing of the MCAS for this year. And hopefully in future years, we'll be able to save that $9 million and spend it on more efficient use education-wise for our kids. We had the MAS-C Delegate Assembly, and it was a raucous event. We passed a resolution without debate to ask the state to look into the transportation bidding process in Massachusetts. We also passed a resolution for full-stable funding for MEKO. Believe it or not, MEKO every single year doesn't know what its budget's going to be. So we're asking for the $20 million to be guaranteed by statute. A regional transportation resolution actually failed. It was asking that the regional schools be allowed to charge students and families if we don't get 100% reimbursement from the state. And most of us don't believe in having fees for our students if we can avoid it, so that that resolution was declined. A resolution on diversity, equity, and inclusion recommending having a DEI coordinator for all districts was tabled, which essentially means it failed. A resolution for the Mass School Building Authority to reintroduce the accelerated repair program and to allow public preschools access to those funds was passed. A resolution on school bus stop sign cameras was tabled because the law is vague on whether or not Massachusetts were allowed to have stoplight cameras anyways. A resolution on MCAS was tabled. However, MAS-C has two resolutions from previous years already stating our position that we'd like to see the MCAS eliminated as a graduation requirement and to go to a more holistic method for accountability instead of being a high-stakes test. And a lot of districts have more input on that. And we had a resolution on the safe storage of firearms, which was tabled as well. A lot of people think overreached by the organization and didn't understand exactly how a school committee would approach this anyways. So it was spirited debate, to say the words. My God, thanks for sending me. Appreciate being your delegate. Since we last spoke, I testified on four bills at the State House. One of them was the Rural Schools Bill. Again, the Rural Schools Bill gives monies to communities that are deemed rural by state statute. Plington does qualify. That brings Silver Lake $173,000 a year. If the Rural Schools Bill is passed as written, we would see a quadrupling of those funds. In addition to that, written into that statute, a lot of people don't realize, the Rural School Commission came out of the Student Opportunity Act. And now in the Rural Schools Bill, there is a placeholder for a state-run legislative body to investigate special ed funding statewide as well, which could lead to further legislation helping us with the extraordinary costs we're currently facing with special ed transportation and special ed in general. Also testified on the Special Ed Reserve Fund that we actually brought to MAS-C and they supported it. The bill's been filed, went through committee. That would allow us to put 5% into a special ed reserve fund based on our net school spending. This is more of a local thing than a regional. We also testified on House Bill 2076, which would allow our three municipalities and any other municipality that has an assessment to a regional school to set up a reserve fund as well. As we did with our budget last year, for example, Halifax had a very low assessment last year. They could have put money into a reserve fund for a year where their assessment goes back up. Because when we deliver to the towns basically responsible budgets, we know that it's not necessarily reflective of what our towns see as their assessment. So this would create peaks and valleys, like a leveling out device. Hopefully that'll get passed. We'll see where it goes from there. Governor Healy's budget is due on January 24th. And we're looking to continue asking for transportation funding, especially for regional, to be at the full 100%. We're looking for special ed transportation to be funded at 75%. It was only 57% this year under Student Opportunity Act. We're hoping that the Rural Aid gets passed and, yeah. I had a lot more, but let's just end right there because I'd love to go home sometime tonight.
Can I just ask one quick question? Did you testify on behalf of the bill to reverse for the kids that currently can't use the equipment because of not having a certain license?
I did not testify, nor did I lobby because I'm not a lobbyist. But I've had extensive meetings and conversations with reps and senators on that bill. And I was hoping it would make it into the supplemental budget. But the supplemental budget, I don't know if you knew this, actually got caught up for about a month. The House and the Senate couldn't get together on it. And the fact that it just passed was out of session because they recessed for six weeks. They went back just to pass this. There was nothing else in it except for money. So our kids still don't have access in the horticulture program or in agricultural schools to all the equipment of their trade as of right now. But still working on it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? So red light cameras are not necessarily legal in Massachusetts?
Not currently. There's a pilot program being proposed for 10 communities to do red light cameras. But that's caught up in committee as well because of the legality.
Not just for school purposes, but generally?
In general. So putting them on the school bus would be complicated by the state not having provision right now.
So right at the center of town, there's a stoplight camera. And that's dubious legally? Is that what we're saying?
If it's actually giving tickets, that's not currently allowed under state statute.
All right. Any other questions for Jason? All right, PAC, we are not going to have an update tonight because Amy is at the PAC meeting tonight instead of ours, so next time.
Policy. I would appreciate a motion to waive the actual reading of policies.
Second. Okay. Any further discussion? Motion to waive the actual second reading of the policies. All right. All in favor, please manifest.
I'd like to make a motion to accept as a second read policy BEDHGEBF, IHBF, IHBG, IHEH, IJ, IJR, ILD, ALC.
Second. Any further discussion?
Is there a reason that we're seconding them or waiting the second reading tonight and passing them all at once instead of waiting for the next meeting?
No, this is the second reading. I just didn't want to have to read the actual policy word for it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Yeah, we had a discussion on them during the first read and any questions that anybody had. Policy Subcommittee did put these all forward unanimously. We had a great policy subject to be reading last time we met. So appreciate your approving of these.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please manifest. All right, Safer.
We had a great meeting in November. We discussed at length the capital plan and we had a lot of give and take back and forth. To the credit of our Facilities Director, he was able to find the ways to get a lot of the work done that we had proposed in-house, some of all field repairs, particularly and some of the other repairs. We do have some capital. The capital plan, I guess, is all but finalized at this point going forward. And we feel comfortable that we're in a position where... And we feel comfortable that we're in a position where don't want to release the number yet until it gets finalized. But we'll be able to move that forward. We also had a very nice presentation to traffic engineers on the proposal we had for a stoplight out front at the temporal plate in Station Street intersection. The Highway Superintendent, Town of Kingston, has these consultants looking at all the highway issues in Kingston. And it made them available at the Town of Kingston's expense to the region to particularly look at this intersection. And their proposal is to construct a roundabout versus a traffic light. And a lot of us were skeptical when we first got the presentation, but they were able to show us the benefits of a roundabout. In a nutshell, a lot of times you put in a traffic light, it actually decreases safety because people see a yellow light, they step on the gas instead of the brake. And then you'd have people accelerating in front of the school. Some of the other benefits of the roundabout are that it becomes a traffic calming measure that slows down traffic. It's easier for pedestrians to cross. And it offers a centerpiece, it's an aesthetic value. You've reached a destination when you get to a roundabout. And then Silver Lake becomes somewhat of a destination. But safety-wise, it's an improvement. And cost-wise, it's a small amount of upcharge, very small. By the time you size the roundabout, the drainage issues aren't going to be a problem. And it looks as if that would be the best resource for us to pursue with our legislative assistance and getting some funding to do that and prove the safety down in front of the school. So I want to thank the Town of Kingston for providing that, those consultants for our meeting publicly. It was a nice gesture to go forward. And we hope we'll be able to move forward with that funding.
Yeah, it was an interesting meeting. It was the amount of time and effort that these guys did to do the study, the whole analysis of traffic patterns when it's busiest most. I mean, they did an outstanding presentation. And also, I reiterate, thank the Town of Kingston for paying for this study. But I wrote down some of the figures. But they did, because we weren't sure that that was even an option to do a roundabout until they presented it. But just a traffic signal would be probably roughly between $400,000 to $500,000. And then we tried to incorporate maybe if, you know, the round, obviously, the roundabout was the more safety reason and also with the traffic and it wouldn't really be an option in the land. But maybe perhaps bringing in horticulture in the island and having them do something. And then, you know, it would be donated to the high schools that we could do some really fun things with that. They were going to possibly, I think by the next meeting, give us an estimate on what a roundabout would cost. But it would be, it's definitely doable, especially with the drainage. And also would allow buses and also like if a big Cisco truck would be able to go around to do deliveries. And they did every scenario possible. And my thing was how many students cross that road to go across and go to Nino's. And it's for cars to already have to slow down, but it gives them a minute to look on both sides of the streets for these kids to cross and get there safely.
And additionally, it takes the, there's a curve right at the intersection, which makes it twice as dangerous.
Yeah.
And that, it nullifies that because when you reach a roundabout, you have to go around. You don't have to go 180 degrees. It was a great presentation. Thanks for adding those.
Yeah, no, it was good.
And then we have, so we discussed briefly some solar options to go on. Solar canopies, cost of steel has gone up, making canopies not cost-effective for schools to consider over the parking area. They are looking at possibilities of some of the areas that we have with fields that aren't used, that are sloped, that we could use for the roof proposals. But the roof proposals would be a hard sell with our group just because of the structure of the building. We want to make sure we protect our roofing going forward. The last item, Michaela has a presentation on fees that she wants to hear.
Thank you. And thank you to the Subcommittee for giving us a blessing to review our building and facility fees. There's two documents in here. The first PDF is our existing fee usage worksheet, if you will. It was last revised in 2011. Nobody owns the actual digital copy of it. So it's just crooked PDF that none of us can edit. So Ms. Jameson, Mr. Wallace, and I met. My two goals, one was to create a user-friendly form that we all have digital access to, but also to review our fees and expectations, especially when it comes to renting our facilities to outside organizations. So if you look at the second one, it's not crooked. The SL logo. All of the information is the same as the existing form. We just made it a little bit more clear in terms of outlining three different groups that we would be charging, spaces that are available to rent, and just clearly communicating sort of the expectations with each of those areas, such as whether food and water or food and drink are allowed or minimum hours that you can rent it for. The items that are highlighted are the suggested changes we are making to the rates. And I'll explain each of those. The first item is for our tennis court fee. Previously, for district nonprofit groups, it was listed as a "to be determined", which in education, sometimes we need black and white, right? So we took a look at, you know, typically the types of groups that may be renting our courts, what the cost really is. And we feel comfortable that the standard rate of $15 per hour would be great as opposed to charging one group 20, another group 10. Let's just make it one rate. Clearly communicate that. No changes to the other groups. For our field rentals, district nonprofit, it's always been $50 per hour with a minimum of three hours, not two or six. And then after three hours, it went down in cost. District for profit was $6 per hour. And then after three hours, it went up in costs. And then out of district was $150 per hour regardless. Regardless of how many hours you added for. So after reviewing this, we would prefer to keep the rates the same, regardless if it's three hours or six hours. Unfortunately, going down to $15 an hour per field for the first column, for the first group, with the increase of cost of things like paint, the monitoring we need for field maintenance, it's not always quite covering the costs that we need to maintain our fields. So we feel that if we charge the $50 per hour, regardless of how many hours, that would more than cover it. For the district for profit group, we didn't think it was fair to charge more after three hours. Again, we should just, it's one flat rate will suffice. And then we didn't anticipate a change for the out of district. Under fee due dates, one of the things that we're recommending is a larger deposit. Previously, we were only asking for a $200 security deposit only for the fields. In our experience, though, especially with outside groups, unfortunately, sometimes groups don't pay or they don't pay on time. And that puts a burden on the district because the district has to absorb the cost of any custodial overtime or any materials that we've already purchased to prep a field or to prep an area of the school that's going to be rented. And so we're asking that when a group reserves a date on our calendar, we ask for a deposit. We're recommending 25% for in-district for-profit groups, 50% for out-of-district profit groups. And then asking that all of their fees be due at least one month before they're prior use of the facility. I think that will help us with the groups that sometimes don't pay on. We'll have to track them down. And then in the event of cancellation, we need to be made. For our in-district groups, make it anytime. We'll give you a full refund. We don't want to, you know, hurt any of our in-district groups. However, any group that is for-profit, we would ask that they make that cancellation within two weeks of the event. After that, we can't guarantee that we've already purchased materials for the event or that we can start putting in the overtime for that event. So they would forfeit their deposit in that case. And then I just made a little bit more clear the school's ability to cancel, which wasn't necessarily on this fee. It's in our building use fee that they sign off on. But just so that we're clearly communicating, we want our organizations to know that in the event of an emergency, we do reserve the right to cancel their event. Or if there is a school event that is planned later on in the year that we didn't anticipate at the beginning of the year when a group was organizing it, we can cancel their at us within 30 days. This doesn't usually happen. We don't generally bump people out. We work with them, but I wanted to make sure that was clearly communicated. Again, it's not a new policy. It's just communicating on this worksheet in addition to the application that they sign off on. Think I covered all the suggested changes. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. And then I would be asking for your approval since it does require fees.
How do you address a last-minute weather cancellation?
So I believe in the application that they signed. And I can double-check. But I would say that they wouldn't get their refund, right? Because we've already, so usually we work with the group. If there's a big rainstorm coming in and they can be flexible with their dates, we'll accommodate another day. But we can't predict the weather. And if we've already put down lines and we put in the overtime, they would have to forfeit it.
So you just sort of leave it unaddressed?
I can put that in there. Maybe it might be more clear.
I appreciate the candidness and how you have to handle it. I mean, I assume that would happen. Thunderstorm rolls in, all of a sudden, we gotta cancel the event. You try to work with them.
Yeah, for outside.
Try to reschedule.
And I do, I just noticed my, the last column should say out of district for profit.
Yeah.
I guess it doesn't really matter if it's for profit or not.
They're both, though, right? For or not for profit?
Yeah, so clarify that as well.
Or it's both?
Yep. Regardless of what kind of organization you are.
So I made a motion to accept Principal Gill's facility use worksheet with the amendments you just mentioned.
For weather? Two?
With the two amendments you just mentioned, the weather, the profit, and the last column. So to make those changes.
I'll second it with a question.
Yeah.
If I may. Is this going to implement January 1st or right away immediately?
So, well, I would recommend that any groups that we've already begun working with, well, if the fee goes down, right? So a district nonprofit group, it may actually be a little bit more expensive for them. We wouldn't charge them more because we've already locked in, right? But for an out-of-district for-profit group, they may have a $25 savings in there. We can't make fields in there. So we would honor the lower rate. I think to be fair.
Thank you.
We are first and foremost a school, not a rental facility, but we'll make sure we take care of our customers.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, please manifest.
Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you. And the last item in the report, real quick, the land parcel that we have voted and Kingston has voted to accept has moved on to the legislative office for review with all the pieces from both Kingston and Silver Lake. And I want to thank Karen McGally for following up on that today and making sure all the pieces, public pieces were where they needed to be. We don't need to keep that on the agenda any further. Thank you. And that's my report.
Any other treasurer's report?
There is no treasurer's report this evening.
Do we have a Union 31 report?
Just at the last meeting. We all attended. We had a special education presentation, technology presentation, and curriculum presentation, as well as an update about the restructuring and the war on her.
Okay. Single signature.
I do have information on that. On November 13th, 20 warrants were electronically signed by Superintendent Jill Prue and Single Signature Subcommittee of Paula Hatch, Jason Frazier, and Liz Colosse. All payments have issued. And that total was $2,384,334.39.
Let's see, agenda attachments. There's everything. And we do not need to go into executive session tonight. Just think.
Do we want to wait until the meeting's maybe two, three shows in?
Just approve it. Oh, all right.
They're not pressing, boy. When we can or we can't. We don't take two seconds if we do, but it's not going to be a problem if we don't. They're recent enough that it doesn't matter.
We'll just hold it till next. All right. I forget, do I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And that's a rule call, I believe. So Jason?
Sure.
Mark? Michael?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Pam?
Yep.
Me, yes. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.